I um, I I've been in touch with the gentleman from Central Street who came to our last meeting interested in the sidewalk project and. I. They have a Facebook group with contacts. There isn't a town Facebook group. Facebook page that's able to connect with their page. But what I said we would do is their suggestion was that we schedule a community meeting. And that we that they go ahead and invite everyone that's that's in their group. So I thought maybe that was something we could try to schedule for the the early fall. If that was summer's kind of tricky with people being away. But if that was something that you would like me to go ahead with starting to plan and I can I can be in touch with some possible dates. You'd like to continue talking about that, Brandon? Um.
But we have. We put phase one together, right? Do we have the engineering done for phase one? Is that it?
Yeah, we have. We have the phase one. I think the next step would be looking for funds. We'd be asking either. I'm gonna assume it would be a request to the capital improvement planning committee to fund. The the. Bid documents and get getting it out, whatever we needed to do to the design that we have, put it out to bid and then looking for construction funds possibly the next year. So I can start putting together a request for that. It would be it would be jointly with the DPW because they would really be managing the project. Um. But um, so if that's something that there is interest in doing, I can start working on the capital request. I mean, I don't think those will be due until the fall. So we don't have to decide that now.
I think it would be a. But it'd be good to get this group involved. I don't know how much involvement they could they could have, but. You know, working on grants or anything like that, doing a little research for grants and things like that to give them some. You know, here's some tasks, see what you see what you can do with those to to move this forward. Because I mean, we look, we you know, we look around, but there's somebody that knows their way around a computer can look and look and say, look, there's a grant here, there's a grant there. And maybe they could, but I think when we do talk, we should invite them to look through some looking and maybe see if they can help us find some financing for this.
Okay.
This is something that we've has has. Worked after a long time and I think that the towns want it. And then certainly ever since the park was built. That's been a conduit for people to get down to the park and it's a it's an if you walk at this point right now. So um. Having something done with this would be would be good. So and you never know, they they may find something, they may find a benefactor, you never know.
Do you want me to hold off on preparing a capital grant or should we wait on that discussion? I mean, we don't have to decide that now if we don't want to, but.
Well, there's more, there's more to be done. I mean, there's more to be done insofar as that that we don't, that's only paid money for phase one. And so looking at getting engineering done and stuff for the for the for the rest of that sidewalk, I mean, that's, you know. There are plenty of grassroots groups that have managed to put projects together. So I would invite them to do that. And if we can, at the same time, apply for capital. Uh. Improvement there. I mean, I'm sure the more the more help we get, the better off, you know. So.
Okay.
So yeah, I I tell you, it'd be good to have them come in and.
Well, I I think what they're looking to do is to have a a meeting to, we want to make sure that if we're going to take further steps on this, we want to make sure that the residents are still supportive of it. And then we want to see it done. It's a very, it's a pretty significant number of trees that would be removed and there would be impacts to people's driveways. So we would probably want to have like a presentation where I have the DPW. Show the plans and explain what the impact would actually be in the neighborhood and just be sure that that was still something that they were hoping to have.
Well, how extensive is this neighborhood group? I mean, do they, would they have some of that load?
I don't know yet. I think we need to have a meeting.
If there's a lot of people all up and down there, they could they could help to disseminate the. The plan and the information that goes along with it to their neighbors. You know, they could probably show up with with more information than we would have about who's on board, who's not.
That would be the purpose of having a meeting, a community meeting, to talk to them about that.
Alright.
So.
Right, okay. I think it's a I think it's a worthwhile project and it's something that has been down. Um. Something that we've wanted to do for a long, long time, sort of like that sidewalk on April Street. Which took a long time to get it, but boy, now it's, there's a lot of traffic on there. It was a lot of people that wanted that sidewalk. And now the people can walk from ice towers there all the way down to, well, actually from almost the town line. All the way to town downtown on a sidewalk, all the way. So it turned out to be a really. That section that was missing turned out to be very important. And it gets well used, so.
Um, the other possible capital project that I was asked about recently was whether the CPC would be looking to try to advance. The construction for any of the Main Street improvements that had been identified when we and this engineering department had hired TEC to do a corridor study. And they had done a number of design alternatives. It was it was a town meeting or an article from, I want to say, twenty twenty. Um, so we haven't really advanced on that. And I think it was because we weren't sure what was happening with sewer. And now that we know that that's not happening in terms of looking at other design. Um, we had, actually, it's Lillian Hartman who had asked me, kind of on behalf of the transportation committee, whether that was something that we would be looking to try to advance. And what it would entail would be figuring out what improvements we would like to see and then asking for a funding to do twenty five percent design. So that we could petition to have it on on the state tip. So that we could petition for for funding for Main Street. And probably doing that twenty five percent design would be several hundred thousand dollars.
So we talked about the realigning Main Street, back what's in end or in reading. The three lanes, the turn lane.
That was one of the design scenarios. We were given a few alternatives. So it would be a matter of figuring out which.
What was around about it or something, you know, but.
Um, I don't know if TEC had looked at it as much as, I'm not talking about the really early basic schematic design study. I'm talking about the actual like corridor study that TEC came in and did. They did a whole bunch of possible design elements. It's um, it it's on our website. I know we haven't talked about it in a really long time, but they kind of gave the pros and cons of each possible element, like. Going to three lanes or not, going to certain, just certain, you know, different configurations and different repairs, you know, different odd changes to the corridor or not. Um, so I didn't know if that was something we would want to look to try to pick up again. If we did ask for money to complete a twenty five percent design, it would be a really big. Capital project, probably. So I, again, it's not something we need to decide right now. I just wanted to bring it up because I was asked about it, whether we would want to be looking to advance that or not.
Yeah, I think we are. Um, and I I mean, I think it would be a good job for us to do a quick review on it to see if there are, if there are components in it that we think might be more important than others. But right off the top of my head, I don't recall the whole thing either.
Okay.
So I mean.
There, it's been a while.
Yeah, so I mean, to to maybe put it in the the Dropbox or maybe as a our share file.
Yeah.
Um, just a synopsis of what it is so we can just talk about whether we want to work forward for that. Or particular facets of it that are more more interesting than others.
Okay. Um, I think a couple of other things that have been on our agenda, I I assume you'll probably want to wait until everyone is here, including just continuing discussion on the CPC's work plan for the year. And the, again, the stormwater regulation stuff, I, the engineering department just hasn't had time to meet me to to kind of figure out exactly what we need to do. So I I can put that on a future meeting, but we're still working on it. And that's, that's all.
And that's someone, is that like new regulations or?
It's updating our subdivision regulations and our site plan review regs to make sure they're consistent with what the town is required to do for our our stormwater permit. Um, so looking at ways to reduce impervious area and as one of the things that you mentioned, you know, previously had been to. Try to put it on our regulations to take volume of runoff into it and not just rate. So those types of issues. But the goal would be for us to eventually update our subdivision and site then review regulations because it's been a long time since they were reviewed. And to make sure that they were consistent with, you know, best practices for.
Have you, have you enough opportunity to see other communities that have a volume consideration?
Yeah. Yeah, I was given an example or two from the Fisher River Watershed Association. Um, there, there, there are at least a couple of communities that do that. And it's a little controversial because it does make development difficult. So it's something to discuss. We don't have to do that, but there are some recommendations that can be given from the engineer that invited them, that the engineering department hired. To look at, you know, whether the town is meeting our storm stormwater permanent requirements. And there are some suggestions for considering things like different designs for our parking lots and making sure there's more impervious area, possibly narrow road widths, things like that.
For the most part, our we, our subdivision control has worked out pretty good as far as grains, cals and all that. Only had a few situations where volume was more than expected. And but we could have caught those if we had asked for that calculation to be done, so.
That would be an option to ask for the calculation, but not to require a certain standard, so we would know.
Well, yeah, because if the if the calculations indicated that there was going to be an excess or a large excess. Then that would be time to say, whoa, hold on a minute here, but we need to do something just a little bit different. Uh, so I want to make sure that the ability to acquire. You know, some mitigating certain, some mitigating things to, because we found that that. With the calculations that the quantity was going to be so much larger, we want to have the ability to say, you need to do something about it. Well, it'd be interesting to see what the other towns do.
Yeah, I can share. I, so it's Fisher River Watershed Association put together a pretty helpful document with a bunch of different changes, including a change related to, you know, measuring volume. Um, from different communities in the area and the suggestions for, you know, who had a good.
It would seem that the research that they have to do just to do the ride rates of runoff gets in quite a ways toward being able to figure the rest of that out.
Thank you.
I would say that shouldn't be too deep to do. Okay, good. Yeah. Give a few more minutes and we can open up that. If you want to set up, if you can see it, I don't want to, don't include anybody else, just so you first have them or. Not a lot to show anyway, once. Well, we got, we have it on, we have it on the iPad thing.
Okay.
Public hearing on one, two, three railroad data. So we're up.
Good evening. Eric Lane, Pace and Jaren, once again, we were here a couple of weeks ago and sent off a couple of tasks. We went out, one of the issues was the access from the condominium, making the turn onto the right of way. We went out, did a field survey of that area, located transformer that was out there. Add sheet number three, I don't know if you have it or not, but we were able to drive the fire trucks through there, no problem at all. So that's. Access will not be an issue coming through there. Another issue was how to handle the water. We talked to the fire department and they are satisfied with us running services down to the houses. To have a sprinkler system rather than running a full main down there. I believe they sent an email saying that they were satisfied with that. I had not seen it, but I was told they were going to send one. Um, lighting was an issue. We added four light poles to the plan. Uh, noted to be similar style to what is available, what is currently existing in the condominiums. It'll be the same type of style to get some general security lighting essentially down there. Nothing bright overpowering, but it won't be dark down there as well. And we did talk to Redding Lane and they said as far as moving the poles, they have no problem doing that. And keeping the wires in the right of way, they have a ability to use a wooden beam off the top of the pole to keep the wires over the right of way. Uh, they did say there's potentially to go underground as well, be drastically more expensive. So that will come down to what we're able to. Get approved down down there, whether it's physically feasible or not. And if we were to go underground. Existing service to number five is overhead, so we would essentially go to the condominium underground, go on and still need to be a pole down the end anyway to feed the existing services down there. But believe that was all that we. Was left open to us. We do have the survey plan was signed by the surveyor today. I sent an email to copy and I have a Mylar as well. I don't know. I think as far as Mylar goes, as far as something we need to record, I don't know, maybe it's assigned from the town. I don't know. It seemed to be kind of sound on that, so.
You know, my, my, my email is lost its connection and I.
Oh, okay, okay.
I can go back to my.
I have.
Drop it in. Oh, you have your.
Yes.
Great, okay.
What did you want? You read a couple of inch and a half lines, did that mean?
Uh, it would be sized by the, uh, sprinkler engineer or mechanical and the note the plan says they'll be sized by the, be determined. Uh, with approval of the fire department, obviously, but until we know the square footage of the homes. And type of water pressures they can actually get down there, we really can't come up with a set number on the size of the service. My guess will be probably fours, my guess, four inch down to the homes.
You, um. Well, you should be good to have good water pressure downhill from your tower, so.
Exactly, yes. I don't, I don't see it being an issue, but I don't want to commit to a size of the main yet, but it'll certainly be approved by the fire department.
Okay, um. That that pretty much covers most of what we had, Daniel, was that true?
It is. I I did prepare a conditional approval if you were ready to go, um, in the Dropbox. And I also, we also put in the, um, oh, I'm so sorry. They have the reach from the fire department?
What do you think?
No, in the, in the share file.
It should be.
I don't see it, um.
It should be larger than that, I remember. They're all grouped together.
Yeah, see something called. So I'm going to look under planner memo in case they're all together.
Just the actual memo from the fire department is what you're looking for?
Just the email from the fire department.
Yeah, what would be Jerry's, I think, and the fire department, I think it's the fire department, I'm trying.
Okay.
Shall we go back and do it?
Oh, wait, no.
Did I put it in Anthony? Or not Anthony?
Well, adwords, I'm as aboard. Do you guys have any questions or any comments on the?
We talked in River Park.
And they all, we talked about, oh, we're saying, we're going to stop over and as long as that the the map we're out of, something that has to move or has to go. I mean, that's, that's great. I mean, they got a solution. That's awesome.
Yeah, they can hear that. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, you know, and there's so there's, you know, I'm looking at the maps, you know, you have the blood zone and the weapon. Like, go, uh, we're not busy.
Sorry, that's. I don't know that this is floodplain where you're building.
Do not, yeah, there is floodplain behind the home.
We got that. If we do just survey that, yeah. Can be right at the.
Edge of the flood.
Yeah.
Pretty important.
Yeah. Yeah, so basically, they, you know, right now, what we're basically, the road and the land are to provide access to the lot. Once the access to the lots, they can, like, that's what we're starting to figure out, when he would be able to build it. But we can't do that until he has an access, the natural access, the water providing this.
That's a good, that's a good question because Warren, I don't know if, um. If, um, if they meet, I know like they come out every ten years with a new floodplain. And I know that's in process. I don't know. I mean, it's that area. I mean, I guess if we're just dealing with the road and not the structure, and we find out after the fact that the floodplains have changed in that area. Then that's a whole different issue for that.
Right, that's not progress decision.
Right.
But you are, you are correct because one of the, but one of the things that I I've seen happen is that the engineers walk and. And actually do a survey of you, because this is a big general map that covers the whole area. Well, there may be a hill in the middle, but that doesn't get taken into account by that. So so the the area that they're going to work in, they'll go and actually do a topographic survey of that and and then make sure that it's not, I mean, that's.
We'll file a theme with, with LOMRA, letter of map amendment, and they can determine that specific elevation of that. Now, that said, we are, I mean, Josh Perkin from Iran, step one is we have to get the roadway. Improving plan done, which gets us access. Then we have to go to the ZPA for an A and R plan to create the lots. Then if they're a conservation commission where this will be addressed, and the floodplain does come, you know, through here, showing bold through the home.
Actually, the A and R will come through here, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't correct, that's right, I'm sorry. It'll come through here and, but there is a floodplain here and there's, you know, upland across the way where you can then. Or actually leave the plant here, where you compensate for that. So you have to, through conservation, you have to balance that. If you're filling in a floodplain, you have to compensate by creating floodplains someplace else.
Yeah, you got to create, create industrial storage.
Exactly.
In water, it's a problem. It's always a problem.
It's always a problem.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so what we're basically doing here max is is the roadway, by second natural access and then they still have the burden of.
The long way to go.
Getting the lots that and deciding how much, what they can build on and so forth. And so there's limits just how much impervious area and all that stuff.
Correct.
There's a bit to do there. So, but correct, it's a step.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I think we're ready to make a motion. You have something you want, while you want to wait.
Yeah, I got a few questions. So you're going to move.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I asked you guys if you had any comment. I didn't want to be public, but I'm going to do that now. Okay, you guys all set? I mean, those good questions, so.
Yeah.
Alright, okay.
Both telephone poles, and you're going to move them, correct?
Correct.
This is the point, right?
Correct.
But you guys are going to go underground to your. Composed merging the two lots together, correct?
Potentially.
Potentially. But then you're going to rip up the road to put water line down, correct? And rip up, you gotta dig.
Yeah, it's got to be buried down, you know, deep enough so it don't freeze.
Yeah. So I did my measurements. You know what I mean? So I know the road and I know that my bushes are right on the road of, you know, the surveying marks. So according to one of your plans, you're saying up over here, can I stand up?
Stand over there.
Because I'm not just a homeowner annoying them, I know. So over here, you're always saying you're going to move this telephone pole here, right?
Correct.
At the edge where my fence is, right?
Correct.
So you're going to take that tree down too, because that's on the road.
Yeah, if it's the right way and that's where, well, we can move the pole.
Oh, no, no, no. You're going to take the tree down though, right?
What's that?
You're going to take the tree down though, because that.
I don't, because I'd be ready to try to make that determination.
Yeah. Okay, well, you're going to take five feet because that goes right up over here and that goes to where my fence lines, right?
We're not, we're not taking, we're going to do it right.
Right, so telephone pole is right there in the tree, okay? So then you're going to do the five feet over here, right? And which goes to the front step, which I measured, okay? We'll move it to ninety one here. So what are you doing with this pole there? You're going to move it across here, telephone pole, because you're going to move this one where?
This pole is getting shifted back, I believe it's two or three feet that way. Same with this.
Back that way?
Yes.
On that side, on this side.
Away from your property.
Away from the property, on the same step. So you're going to go up over because I have a utility to, two utilities, one to my garage that's on a separate one. So you're going to go up above the lights, apparently it's going to do that, say, right?
Yep.
So what happens to a lot here? What am I supposed to slot? With all the trees that are all. Really bad, that, which is really bad, which wants to merge with his property, but it's unbuildable, but the towns have, um. Nobody needs to claim it.
I'm not sure.
You know, like, I don't.
Ultimately, we're just working the right way itself, so the land is entitled to the rest of it, it's not really relevant to what we have to do, so I'm not, I can't really, I can't see.
Well, if you're going to take from the corner of the condos coming down with fire hydrants and put out a light, right?
Only on the right.
Yeah, right on the right of way.
In the right way, yeah.
In the right way.
Yep.
So which comes here, which is a little bit over here too. Correct, right in front of my garage, which goes to that wooden fence right here that's on the line, that's on the road. It is.
If everything is going to be engineered to be entirely with.
I think she does it because I mean, we had mentioned.
The twenty foot, right?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Keep what you.
But then you're going to, I feel like you, then you're going to try, so like here, I feel like you're just trying to move it and then move it back over here. You have more clearance to move it. Well, what's the five feet over here for? So once you get past my house, right? So now you want to add five more feet here as an easement, correct? That's what this means, right?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know. Yes, I'm just trying to figure out your.
Yeah.
Yes. On the property that is what the aggressive owns.
He records over here?
Yes.
Correct. So why would he need an easement?
That's what he's doing, is part of the improvement, so that there's actually wider lands for the right of way than just the twenty. It's actually improvement for the access.
And and when?
So utilities are going to go back here, cords are going to go back up, cords are going to go back up over here and you're going to go underground.
Maybe underground, we're not sure about that.
And the streetlights, I'm just thinking, there's a light, and the streetlights are going to be up above those lamps?
It's just similar to what it is entering into railroad now.
Yes, underground.
It'll probably be all be underground.
The lights.
Sure, those are, those are two rentals, but not the, obviously, the lighting. So just think.
This isn't final. This isn't fine, right?
This is just the roadway, this is not the house blocks or anything, just the roadway.
And you're saying by the condos, the fire truck can get there and turn around and into the condos that those things, cause they got stuck there twice.
No, no, no.
They don't, they don't, my driveway.
They can get through here and we're creating a turnaround down here.
Because condos, it's supposed to be a turnaround for all those stupid trucks and stuff, but they don't, they can't cut it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's on the condo side, not not your property and my property.
But it's like you just said that you asked the fire department from here, no? If they can turn around, no?
Touching the road is whether they can get through here and make this turn to here.
Yeah, they can.
Exactly. Yes.
They can do it now?
Yes.
But to turn around down here? And that's not wetland. I'm just asking. I have to zoom things in because you guys bring so small.
Okay, you brought the
The fire department did send us an email, actually I dropped it into the share file when I was on desk just now, but I can read it, it's very brief, it just says, with the plan attached to it. It says, hi Danielle, we are okay with this plan, thank you Barry Galvin, Deputy Chief. So, yes, Deputy Galvin reviewed the plan and fire department has
There was changes to everything.
Yes, he attached the updated plan there.
Is this gonna be The situation?
Yeah, they, yeah. They would, I don't think they would leave it dirt for a fire truck, so. Like you said, they get stuck, they can get stuck easy, so. All right, so from the public, any other comments or questions?
I would just point out to the, the commission that the only specifics, not a waiver per se, but it's the turnaround under the standards. It does require that you make a specific determination that the T is approved by the fire department is acceptable in lieu of the whole cul-de-sac. Otherwise, we, we should meet all other standards.
So, do you allow, we, we need a motion for that?
Yeah, actually, I think we do, or we would add it to the Yes, why don't we? I can do a motion for that, that says, let's see. Say the CPC makes a determination that the T turnaround as approved by the fire department is acceptable. As shown on the submitted plan.
Yeah, I think that works.
You, so, that, so move them, okay. I think it's simple. Okay, all right, second. Okay, I'm waiting a second. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. With the record shows three in favor, no opposed, there's only three members here. Okay, now, you're the main motion there with, with you have, like, we'll be
I move the community planning commission vote to approve the plan entitled roadway improvement plan Railroad Avenue North Reading, Mass, Massachusetts, dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Drawn by Hayes Engineering, last revised October first. Subject to the terms and conditions of the certificate of conditional approval.
I'm sorry, the revision date just needs to be corrected, so it would be a last revised
July thirtieth.
July third.
I'm sorry, and the plan is August first. Last revised July thirtieth, drawn by Hayes Engineering, subject to the terms and conditions of the certificate of condition, conditional approval. Is as dated as amended this evening.
So you knew, let's say, on today's date, it's August sixth.
As dated August sixth, as amended this evening.
One second.
Second.
And before we actually vote, I'm, I'm gonna, just, just comment, can we please stay in touch with the, with the brothers and everything, let them know that however things go and you have to give them a heads up when you're gonna do some work that might affect their ability to access their property, things like that, do stay in touch with them. I think that was
Yeah, we appreciate that, cause obviously she's concerned that what's going on in her neighborhood. I mean, you even got up and started pointing at stuff. Right, and that's the thing, so communication here between the two of you is pretty important.
And we want to make sure that continues for you, okay?
Is there certain notice hours or times when you have to tell me when he's gonna do something, like start with my bomber and stuff?
That's what we want to do, we want to let you know ahead of time, so you're ready to, you, you, you so that it doesn't just happen on you, so you know what's going on.
We'll, we'll, we'll give you plenty of notice.
Okay.
Okay, solid and positive for you.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. And opposed, with the record shows three in favor, no opposed, you're all set.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for keeping us on the straight now, Deidre. Well, we gotta sign something for you.
Make sure you have it all together.
Was that the answer?
Thanks very much.
I've told you.
We're gonna, we're gonna sign these, you know, meeting or?
Yeah, now the Mylar is just a reportable plan sheet, but it's not, it's not a subject of use, it doesn't matter a thing.
But it looks to have the updated date on it, do we have that?
Um, yeah, these are, and they're, each revision is noted down here. You can, you can certainly sign them now, this type of thing that you're off on, the actual, yeah, it's the layout with the surveyor and Sam Tusk.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you, if you want, you can sign it now.
Okay. Yeah. Well, until now, you gotta sign them another time.
Right, you might as well see here, but you How do you, you do this, you divide them up? They can't design in the same block.
And I was Oh, you're the old guy.
Ever since they upgraded our email, I realized I can It's not like it's all of them, so my email is frozen.
It's side That was a little point with the weapons and everything that you brought up to, but they're gonna have to
And then the, like, some goes through the house. Require them to, they're gonna put in some of the weapons, but they then have to do
Yeah, but is it in the same watershed they have to do that?
Yeah, they gotta, it's gotta, it's gotta be compensatory storage, so.
How does that work?
One and a half times, if they disturb, you know, a hundred square feet, they have to provide a hundred fifty square feet.
Of what?
Of compensatory storage at the, at the, at the weapons elevation.
Uh, so it's all local water?
That means they gotta take some of their upland. So you got all the upland and then you got the, the floodplain, and they need to disturb some of the floodplain, whatever. So they, they fill in a thousand square feet or five hundred square feet. Then they go over there and they dig this area down and create and connect it to this
I understand.
Yeah, what they call compensatory storage. But it's, it's, it's at the rate of one and a half times what they take.
That's hard to do.
And what's with this?
There are places where there is though.
Well, that's what I mean, it's gonna be really hard for them to figure that out, but.
We did, over on the pond, we did a one, one over there, but they had a the whole lot was in floodplain. And they, there was no, so there's no, it, it's in existence, it was preexisting. So it's not like you can kick them out, so the question was what are you, what do you do? The only way, the only thing they could do was to, they have to buy a piece of land off, off the street and then created a compensatory zone on the other side of the pond.
Wow.
Well, it was a small piece of land, it's invaluable, so we did, you know.
I don't like seeing houses stacked up, everybody also.
Then definitely has to go to conservation commission, their, their memo to us was, this definitely has to catch the conservation.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. I don't see, I mean, I think, I mean, there's only your crafty, I feel like economically, they, you know, they developed, they got three, two houses. I mean, if you want a lot, but I'd rather see one on Well, that's the thing, you need to plan two to be economical, I'm sure that would But I've seen the plans going Determination on like what the actual buildings are and what can be built, is that just oscillated on the road?
Well, first of all, they, they're gonna have to come in to see us. Yeah, they, they're gonna have to come in, but with A and R.
They need to do an A and R, so we will eventually have to approve the lot lines through an A and R plan.
And then A and R will be valid, cause they now have, as, as, as their frontage. So because they have decent frontage, they can do an A and R.
As far as the buildings go, that just goes to the building department for building permits, but the only thing that can be built there are single family. So they would go in for a permit for any, like anyone else for their house, they're building permits.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, what I'm trying to understand is the blueprint shows that the garage Goodness, thank you.
So they definitely showed possible
Possibility of the garage being together.
They did show possible footprints, but this approval doesn't include any drawings, it's just kind of a
We have, now that's an approved, yeah. That was just to show that it could fit on the line.
Okay, cause I don't think there's any of those in town, are there?
What?
The houses where the garages connect?
Yeah.
Or it's all one structure?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm saying the
Oh, to each house?
Two separate, two separate houses connected at the garage.
No, I don't think they'd be able to do that here.
Okay, cause that's what the, one of the plans showed.
I mean, they'll have to come in for an affirmative.
Yeah. So it actually, what you're saying, it looked like one property.
Yes.
It shows four carports all connected, next to granites.
Well, wait a minute, is that, is that in that same, is that in that single family zone that we did for one thirteen?
No, no, these are single family households, there's nothing
Yeah, you see it right here, so you got a house, house, it says here four rows, or mine's tweaking, I don't, I read that right?
No, they're not, they're not connected.
I don't know nothing. So, I, well, this is why I'm asking questions, I don't know the squad, so what does this mean?
Let's see, that's the
Sorry, I just seen these lines connected and I was confused, so I just don't
Well, that's drainage, and I think that is, that's, that's, that's
Oh, by infiltration.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah. The infiltrate, because, you know, the infiltrate the blue blood on.
Oh, all right. While I'm asking questions.
That's okay, let me find out.